Page ready to begin? Okay. Good evening. I call to get to order the work session for the Morrisville Town Council, April 19th, 2022. Please see, this will be posted online Thursday, the 21st. We look forward to a good discussion this evening on two discussion items. We're going to have a dog park concept update followed by a budget preview and CIP workshop. Plan to take a short break in between these two items. To start us off, I'd like to recognize Randy Little, our Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Director, and Kyle Cooper, our Parks and Greenways Planner, to take us through the first item. Gentlemen?
So, good evening, may I call approaching Liz Johnson and the council. What we'll be here today, we're here today to do some follow up from our previous presentation regarding the dog park. We do have a couple of goals tonight that we want to accomplish and...
I want to move the speaker so it's towards you.
Voice carries. Okay. So, it's a couple of things that we want to kind of get accomplished this evening with this presentation. And let me get it right. And that is to address, you know, the previous comments from our initial presentation, but also want to show some revised concepts as well as some cost estimates for Franklin Upchurch property as well as the Harris Mills property. And some of those comments were based with some modifications concerning the fence height. We revisited how much the mulch was going to cost for those for those two properties, as well as we included some standards in those, the key card system, because we did hear that, as well as investigated the pervious paving for both of those options that we had presented this evening for you. And another comment that we heard is something that I was talking to staff is the operational aspect of the dog park. If something happens, whether it's something that's aggressive or maybe we deem serious, we did look into that, and as you could tell, we did get a couple of other municipalities. But what it boils down to, if it's something that's just a disagreement or a scuffle between the dogs, they would actually contact Parks and Recreation. But if it's more of a serious assault, you know, whether it's on another dog or a person, we would ask them to call 911 first. So, as a part of our operational discussions and strategies, we're going to further seek what those options are, as well as establish some guidelines and some of those things if and when the dog park is built. So, what I'll do now is pass it along to Mr. Cooper, and he can talk about the concepts and those things in essence.
Just get set up over here. Can everybody hear me okay? All right. So, I'm going to walk you through the main changes that we've done for both Franklin Upchurch Senior and the Harris Mill properties. So, this slide is showing what the original concept that we showed you all at the March council meeting. So, you all should be pretty well familiar with how this particular layout worked. So, next slide is going to show you how we adjusted that based on y'all's comments. The main change that happened was we took the dog park spaces that were overshare and pulled them to the other side of the greenway connector. So, we were based off of some checking the sides and the spacing, we estimated that we are able to get about an acre's worth of fenced dog park space in this area in between the greenway and the stream buffers on either side of that. So, there's also a sidewalk connector extension that would be crossing from the parking lot down through the down through this area, through the natural gas easement and tying in with the existing greenway connector in this general in this general area right here. We're still keeping about 32, we're keeping 32 spaces on the park on the dog park side itself, and we've got about 19 spaces over at Indian Creek Trailhead. So, there's plenty of space to go around if there's ever a big overflow need for parking. Free bike racks, double gated entrance with concrete pads for the large, small dog park areas. And based off of some feedback from stormwater, we've added in some additional stormwater treatment areas in order to treat the water that were drained off of the dog parks before it gets into the stream, just to make sure it's cleaner before it gets into the into the stream nearby. And again, timeline, the design could begin this year if it was approved and construction could start in calendar year 2023 if it was if it was approved as a priority. For the pros and the cons, again, it's very near the town center. It's got great vehicle pedestrian access from both Morrisville Carver Road and Hatchet Creek Greenway. Since it's in a flood flood plain area, you've got a large plot space for development, utilize the existing restroom infrastructure at the trailhead, and has a minimal impact on both nearby stream buffer and the natural gas easement across from it. And it's the fenced areas we are estimating would be about 500 feet away from the parking and the temple area for the sick temple nearby. The main cons for this one are, again, we would we likely would need to coordinate the cross access with the sick temple, and given the location of where it's at, since it's right next to a stream, we wouldn't be based off of stormwater's feedback, we would not be able to do a lot of fill grade in this area, just because we don't want to essentially push all any potential like floodwaters to the other side of the stream where there's a commercial area nearby. So, we just wouldn't be able to fill too much in that spot. Get on to the next slide. We also heard the comments about addressing pervious paving. So, we took a look at the what the parking lots for each site would be. Based off of the historic Christian church parking lot project, we got a we got feedback from Eric Pearson and other folks in engineering that we could estimate about $70 per square foot of parking lot area for a pervious paving parking lot. So, for Franklin Upchurch Senior, that's about 11,200 square feet, which would equate to about $784,000. This would allow for additional parking spaces due to reducing the need for a stormwater pond, but in as a trade off, it would require a lot more subgrade preparation and additional materials over the standard asphalt. It also would require more regular maintenance to make sure that the surface remains pervious over time, and just that would require things like power washing, making sure they clean out any of the debris that fills up in there, such like leaf debris, that sort of thing. This also may be impacted by flooding in the area, just again, there's a washout or anything that might potentially clog up the pervious paving in there, which might, again, require more maintenance. It would also be a lot more expensive than the standard asphalt parking, just due to the preparation type of materials and ongoing maintenance. And overall, we wouldn't recommend pervious paving due to the ongoing cost inflation. I mean, materials have been, I'm sure you all are aware of how materials have been kind of like roller coastering, so to speak, over the last couple of years, and we expect that will probably to continue. So, this slide touches on the basic amenities costs, and the primary changes from the previous presentation are highlighted in yellow. We're estimating that overall, the basic amenities cost estimate would be around $829,800. Design costs have been bumped up from $75,000 dollars to $100,000, just to make sure that we are keeping pace with the with price inflations. Construction costs have adjusted to $228,000, and we've broken out the subcosts for that. The primary shifts that occurred from the previous one were in the engineering geotech survey, mobilization, and fine grading. For the mobilization and engineering and geotech, we calculate those as a percentage of the overall project costs, same thing for the project contingency. So, whenever there's any shift in either the amenities or the construction costs, those numbers shift around, so to speak, in order to accommodate that. For the amenities costs, that's about $347,800. And parking lot for the asphalt surface gets bumped up to around $64,000, just due to the due to the additional parking that we extended down on that side. Stormwater ponds, $60,000, thus basically about $20,000 per stormwater pond. We were estimating about maybe three stormwater treatments in that area, just to be on the conservative side. The fencing gets bumped up to about $41,000 due to the extra height difference, adjusting the price a bit. Eight inch mold surfacing goes to about $38,000, which would be about 1,070 cubic yards times $35 per cubic yard. Sidewalk and concrete pads gets extended because of that main sidewalk extension, and we've also added in the card scanner installation and equipment into the into the amenity cost as a basic cost there. So, that's where the $4,000, $3,000, and the $600 for the key card sensor is. And the project contingency just would be about $154,000. Annual operating costs, the main changes on this one are $38,000 for mulch replacement. We're estimating to need to replace the mulch four times, four inches of mulch twice a year, and that's just to do about $38,000 in mulch for the whole year. Stormwater pond maintenance, $1,500 per year, and the card scanner system maintenance and potential subscription, we're estimating that to be about $3,000 per year to cover any potential broken equipment, or if we have if we go with like a subscription fee for managing the card system, we estimate it would be about in that range for 3,000. $500 for self-service, and that all adds up to about $60,900. The next concept is for the Harris Mill Road concept. The primary change on this one was we mainly added in a restroom building onsite in this area right here next to where the alcove parking was caused by the handicap parking here. So, the rest of the site is pretty much the same as from what we touched on from the last presentation. You've got 15 spaces, you've got the shared stormwater pond to the south, which is being coordinated with the dance studio, that they're paying for that stormwater pond over there, and we could touch, we could talk about that later on in the presentation. You've got the restroom structure, bike racks, and the benches on there. The design and construction could start whenever they complete the fire station three project four construction. The in the main pros is we could potentially have space for additional new parking if needed, potentially for an extra bay of parking on the fire station in that area. And for the cons, the restroom building cuts down on the available fenced park space. We're estimating that we would likely need to have some heavy grading to level out the site more for dog park use, as the as the grade would probably slump down a lot in order in late to potential mulch washout. And given the fact that it's next to the fire station and the dance studio, we estimate there may be some noise impact for both of those for both of those areas. And there's only enough space in here for a single dog park fenced area within the existing easements and the buffers. Touching on the pervious paving, we are estimating for the 12,800 square feet of parking there, that would be about $896,000. That, again, we might be able to adjust the size of the stormwater pond if it was pervious, but the, again, more subgrade preparation, more maintenance, and significantly more expensive than asphalt parking, and not recommended due to cost inflation. This slide is touching on what we have for the available space, just to just to kind of showcase what we're looking at here. So, for the storm, for the fire station, we they are using about 3.1 acres of impervious area, and for the stormwater pond up in here, thus including everything on easements in this location right here. This this is covering the western storm drain easement and the northern shared storm storm pond. That is about 1.25 acres. Just as a point of note, this stormwater pond handles the impervious for this business building up in the top here and the preschool building down at the south here. So, that was just basically handling the impervious for both of those offsite properties. The southern shared pond is being planned as a partnership with the dance studio. They were not able to like when they when they're in the middle of reviewing their plans, they were not able to develop a way to do the stormwater pond on their on their lot without it potentially being underground, which would be more expensive than they could handle for development. So, they were partnering with the town to put the stormwater pond on our property and oversize it to handle the like handle development on the remaining rest of the parcel here. So, this would handle the any potential impervious or development on the remaining 1.2 acres of open space if we elected to develop this location. So, it's basically pulling double duty for both of those nearby parcels. Basic amenities costs, the restroom building adds on a significant chunk of change onto the basic amenities for Harris Mill. We're estimating that's going to be about $1,006,038,000 for that total basic amenities cost. Again, $100,000 estimated for design fees, $87,000 for geotech engineering and survey, $35,000 for mobilization, $250,000 for the restroom building, stormwater pond, doing about maybe $20,000 worth for prep work in order to drain it to the remaining stormwater pond. Six foot tall fence around 920 feet, that gives you about $27,000. You've got about $24,000 for eight inch mold surfacing and cyanide's card scanner installation and equipment, and the other items on there means that you're about $518,800 for the amenities and other costs. Project contingency comes out to about $202,000 for the overall for the overall project. And again, the restroom kind of brings up the contingency quite a bit on that. Annual operating costs, we're estimating about $14,000 for replacement of three inches worth of mulch worth of mulch, and estimating about estimating about $3,000 for subscription and maintenance, and here are some supplies for you got bathroom cleaning, bathroom supplies, general building maintenance, and pest control, which add on a couple of a couple of extra, about $10,000, $12,000 onto that and into that area there. So, that comes to about $45,100. Upgrading the amenities cost for each concept, since we offset the keyed card scanners into the basic costs, the overall cost for the upgraded amenities totals out to about $40,000. We're estimating that would cover dog play structures, shade structures, and dog park lighting onsite. So, that would bump both Franklin Upchurch Senior and Harris Mill Road to $869,800 and $1,001,038,000 respectively. So, this slide shows the original concepts and the revised concepts side to side, so you can kind of review what numbers have shifted around and changed based off of the previous presentation. And so, again, you're so again, you've got the total cost of added amenities here, operating costs, whether or not it's a large, small, large dog, small dog, separate space, and overall size, when we estimate would start offsetting annual revenue, just giving you an overview on that front. Staff recommendation still remains to Franklin Upchurch Senior revised concept, given that it's in a great location, a lot across from the town hall, and the future town center project. It's got easy access from the Morrisville Carver Road and Hatchet Creek Greenway, and we have, we expect it will have higher pedestrian access than Harris Mill. And given that it's farther away from the sick temple, we we expect that we'll have a better time buffering noises and site concerns by by keeping the remaining stands of trees over on site in that in that area. And the available space and layout allows for a much more open fence plan, and the existing parking and existing restrooms in Indian Creek Trailhead means that we don't have to spend extra money in order to get the utilities on there, get the restroom construction on there, just trying to make sure, make the best use of the space. Construction timeline, we expect that we can mobilize on the design and construction way more quickly than Harris Mill, and we also have some recommendations for the extra amenities, including the shade structure, card scanning, and membership system. And again, touching on the revenue options, with membership registration, banner sponsorships, and the memorial brick donations, what we touched upon in the previous presentation. That is about all I have for the concepts. I am going to open up the floor for discussion questions if anybody has any. We're happy to happily.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella, please.
Thanks, Kyle, and good presentation. You able to hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. I might need to like have like I need to ask for like back if I can't hear.
Okay. Is it better? Okay. So, I know, okay, a lot of good updates to the presentation. I fundamentally have still issues with both the sites. If you can go to the Harris Mill one, I I'm having a very hard time understanding that. If you can you go scroll down? Yeah, this one, the the chart, yeah. So, my understanding was the fire station was approximately two acres. So, are we saying that an additional acre is for the BMP included? That's more for Brandon, I think, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then I am still not able to understand, like, why 1.25 acres and 0.75 acres? We bought this whole land for $2.2 million, and if we are spending close to three acres in just satisfying the BMP here, then what are we really getting out of it? You know, I'm like, if the studio has issues, why are we in this business of giving them our BMP pond, you know? And I just don't see why we are spending 0.75 acres in, which is equivalent to almost $300,000 of our money being spent for that. And then this 1.25 acres storm easement, I'm, you said we are trying to somewhere in the north, like it's trying to pull. I'm having a very hard time because nothing is usable here. Out of the six and a half acres, three acres is in BMP, and two acres and 0.6 pretty much is what is usable, I would say. So, I'm having a very hard time, because even for doing any other programming here, if the idea is to get into this shared ponds and northern shared, like southern shared, what is left for us? That's that's my thought there. And then come down to the other one arc, go up. Yeah, this this particular one. So, suddenly, you know, I like the staff's, you know, proactive in moving the, you know, the dog park on the other side. But also on this one, we bought this long time ago, this TTA property is close to six acres. And if we are, is that, you know, we, is there any other use that we could use? Say, okay, put a dog park, what about the other side? You know, can we have an open park? Because this is downtown, this whole area is going to transform, and if we are not able to utilize that whole area, like including the easement of the gas easement, like there can be grass, you know, kids can run on it. Because why are we just keeping that all empty? Is there a future plan to do anything there? Because for me, that's prime six acres that we are not, you know, getting the best value for it. That's that's my main concern in that, like, you know, land is a premium, we are paying at a very high price. How can we best utilize this? So, those are my concerns. I want to certainly go walk this area myself to get a feel of it. But suddenly, you guys have done your due diligence correctly, you know, changed the mulch from eight to four. Those things are perfect, and but I still I'm having a hard time because of from on the Harris Mill is we're not getting the best use of the land by getting into charity work there. And here, you know, six acres, are we getting the best use of this area by just putting dog park? What else can we do together? Because you're already spending a lot of money on the parking. If we can have some kind of other amenities or parks or open space that can be used, that can be clubbed together. So, till we have that, a single use is not the best use, what I think. That's my comments.
Do you have any reactions to any of that? Or you want me to, do you have any reactions to anything he said yet, or?
Well, I think initially, we were just asked to provide concepts for the dog park, and and the remaining wasn't wasn't on our register, but we can see exactly what that other use could potentially be to kind of, you know, kind of complete this 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 property, the six acres that you're talking about. But just for just this exercise, it was just.
No, totally get it.
But I totally understand.
But for me, it's like, you know, when we are putting a parking lot, then give us a full picture, because the parking lot is the same, right? Like, we are just cornering to the dog park just to satisfy the the sigur doa. But at the same time, what can we do in the rest? Because it's one shot, we can do both together, kind of a thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, almost like a small area to see the whole six acres, because this is just part of the area we own. Thank you very much. Councilmember Skarren Johnson, please, followed by Mayor Portem Johnson.
Thank you. Can you hear me? I like the revised drawings. I think that you have listened carefully to our requests and adjusted those designs and estimates appropriately. I really do appreciate that. I tend to also be concerned that when we purchased the land, we didn't anticipate as much BMP space being utilized as it is being designed for. I don't know, I mean, we need to have stormwater management that is a value of the town, but in the same sense, we're trying to be using the land as as best we can for the community. So, BMP still meets that need, it's just less of those assets are available to us. Since the property will not have new restrooms across the street, they will be using the Indian Creek Trailhead restrooms, will there be like water available for the dog park? Because that seems to be, you know, when you have a restroom, you obviously would have water supplied to that area. However, it's very hot in the summer, and we need to make sure that we have access to either a fountain or some sort of water supply that dogs can access, or the owners of the dogs can access for the dogs in this design. And I wasn't really sure if that was called out specifically, but it was being planned for.
We did include in the cost estimates for water and for like water and fountains and other items for the for these both of these dog park designs, we included a cost estimate for both of those in the overall price for it. So, we are aware of that.
It's included.
We're planning around that.
Okay, great. And the other question I have about the TTA property across the street, is the parking lot close enough that we could possibly use it for Pew House? Or is it? I'm always trying to find more parking for the Pew House, because it is such a limited area, and if we could have a walkway that connects the parking lot, you know, to the street near the Pew House or something, and it's not really clear on this diagram where the Pew House is in this snapshot, but we we need to, you know, not just look at the dog park, but that other municipal buildings that are nearby, and then how do we connect them via walkways or areas like that?
So, for that for that parking over there, I mean, it like, I think we could, we could be potentially use it for overflow for Pew House if we end up developing it for that use. I don't think it's too far down the street. I mean, it's going to be on the other side of this of the sick temple, obviously, but if it's if for programming needs, depending on how things pan out, I think it's, I think it's feasible.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mayor Portem Johnson, please.
Councilmember Rabbadi.
Sure. Councilmember Rabbadi first.
You don't have anything?
No.
She does, but.
You were up first.
Oh, okay, thank you. So, as I look at this, I'm wondering if there if there's a possibility that we could do a one acre log, large dog park over here and a half acre smaller dog park on the other side. Small dogs won't make as much noise, they won't make as much waste. And I think that's, you know, I think that's something else that we could consider, depending on the number of dogs that we think are in Morrisville. I mean, there's a lot of dogs in Morrisville. And, you know, if we're talking about a subscription service and opening up to carry residents or, you know, whoever, then I think we should, you know, I mean, we just might want to consider how much room we we actually need, because the one thing we don't want to happen is Because the one thing we don't want to happen is that we open the dog park and there's so many dogs there that it's not an enjoyable experience. Another thing is, so I really like this design also. I think this is great. Well, there, in the, is there a map that shows this in like, in context somewhere? I thought I saw one, but like, I, I'm having a hard time really visualizing. Like, is this white building on the top right over here, is that Pew House? Or like, where, where are we exactly?
No, I, I mean, with, if, with permission, I can open up IMAPs. Okay, yeah, that's, okay. Go ahead and get that in.
And Councilmember Rabadi, we do have a design where we do have two separate dog spaces too as well. Concepts of Kyle has designed that too as well.
I mean, I understand that it would increase the fencing cost and everything. And I mean, as a matter of fact, we could start out with what we have and then, you know, and then go to, you know, if we need more room, then we get it. But, okay, so.
So, again, this is a slightly outdated aerial, but this, this is the property that we're currently, that we are currently on right now. So, Pew House is up this way. The Sikh temple would be off this way and the Town Hall Drive is right off in here. So, not, so, does that help, does that help?
That, okay, this helps a lot. So, is the concept that there would be a sidewalk in front of the dog park, in front of the Sikh temple, down to where the Pew House is? Or are we talking about people like walking along the side of the street if they want to get down to the Pew House?
Let me flip back to the PowerPoint presentation. We can, so right now, what I had in the design was like a sidewalk leading from the parking lot out to that. For Franklin Upchurch Street, when that's being rerouted through, I'd have to check with them, I'd have to check on the plans, if there's sidewalk in on this area. I'm, I'm, I would assume there is, but I would need to double check on that point to be, just to be perfectly safe. But we can double check on that in the future design.
Okay, and can you just point out to me which of these lines is Town Hall Drive? Like, I feel like I had this whole thing in my mind and now I kind of don't.
Sorry, it's, um, Town Hall Drive is right behind where these, Town Hall Drive is right here in behind these two labels.
Okay.
Right here.
So then, all right, that's great. So then, what are, the only other thing I have is, what are the ingress and egress modes here? Is it one entrance and that's also the exit? Or is there a way that we could provide maybe an exit? I mean, I don't want to go crazy and say like out onto Chapel Hill Road. But I mean, is there, is there a way that we could not have all the dog park traffic bottlenecking right here on the other side of Town Hall Drive? Like, is there any place else that cars could get out?
So, the only, so again, this is, I mean, this is the dead end here. The only other way that I could see that working is if there was an entrance down here. There's a, I know there's a, there's a side street that exits out onto Town Hall Drive right over here. But this would be the primary way to get, this would likely be the primary way to get in and out. But we could look at working around, like, working around the developments up in that area there for secondary.
Because the way that it's laid out now, it would have to be right turn in, right turn out only, right? Because there's no way that, I mean, like, I can't even fathom the concept of more cars trying to turn left onto more.
Councilmember Rabadi. It remind you a couple of things. One, keep in mind from what you saw on IMAPs, Franklin Upchurch seniors being straightened out. So Franklin Upchurch right now just sort of, is actually going to come straight down and connect with Town Hall just to sort of the southeast of Morrisville Carpenter. So, when you come out of what would be a dog park here, you would pull up to a signalized intersection, basically on Town Hall Drive across from Town Hall. So, there should not be an issue with bottlenecking because there will be a full access intersection there where traffic could come and go from.
Right, there's a signal there now and there's a huge bottlenecking problem.
Well, there's a signal there now, yes, but it, it doesn't connect like it will when the road is straightened out and when there's an opportunity to stack vehicles if you need to. I don't know that prior to these renovations, that there was, there may have been a signal on the other side, but I'm not sure that there was. But this realignment will make that much more natural for vehicles to safely move out of there.
Okay. And are we going to be, last question, are, how many of these trees are we going to be able to save? I mean, dogs like trees. I don't want to see us clear cutting all these trees to make a dog park.
So, it, so regarding for tree save, it's going to depend on the grading in there. If we don't do a lot of grading in on this spot, we might have an opportunity to potentially save like specimen trees and maybe incorporate them into the, into the dog park itself. But that would require, like, more detailed engineering and design in order to make, in order to like, see what that would look like and how that would, how that would operate.
Okay, I would just appreciate your keeping that in mind as a consideration as we go forward. Thank you, this is a great presentation, I'm really happy with this design.
Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
So, thank you Kyle and Randy for, for bringing this forward and for the presentation. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo some of the same comments that Councilmember Garamella raised. On this particular example here that we have up, I'm going to talk about stormwater ponds first. Because we're, we're now having the parking lot on one side and the dog park on the other side versus the first concept you brought us, does that mean the stormwater ponds are, are, are larger in space? Because you have to have one on one side and one on the other now? Can you just tell, tell me about that?
So, for this one here, the reason that we added on these two stormwater ponds into this overall concept is we're trying to anticipate if we need to treat that water that's draining from the mulch into the, into the stormwater ponds before it reaches the stream. Because the last thing that we want to do is have untreated dog park, like, a dog park stuffed with all sorts of.
Waste.
Fire matter in it, draining into the stream. So, we're trying to like, address that, like, by adding in the stormwater treatment areas into the design at an early base.
Okay, so if, and, and again, I don't, just so I, I understand because it'll factor in my, which, which concept I like the most. Because I agree where we need to maximize our, the land that we own, maximize its use for the amenities that our citizens want. So, if these stormwater ponds are taking up a lot of space because we choose one location over another, you know, that, that kind of, that matters. It's one more thing to factor in. Not, not that it, you know, we would say yes or no, but, but one more thing to factor in as we balance all these decisions. So, okay, all right. And then the other thing on this site, the gas lines are those, those lines that kind of go down. Can you just point out where the gas line is on this so I'm clear?
Yes, so the gas line, so if you, if you see my cursor on screen, the gas line is right in between these two dashed lines that runs in through here. So, it's essentially, so it's like, so we have to, that's for that, that's where that easement, for that particular gas line in that area.
So, and what, what can we put on a gas line? Can we have open space on a gas line? And I mean, is that why you moved the park to the other side of the gas easement?
So, I actually reached out to the representatives with Dominion Energy about that specific question. They mentioned to us that we can do a fenced area over top of the easement. But what we would need to do is extend it all the way across and get them an access gate in order to get in and out of the easement area. We would not be able to grade a lot in that location. So, it, whatever that we put out there would have to remain at grade in order for them to be able to access the pipe and not have too much extra stuff up on top of it. We wouldn't be able, like, we would be able to have maybe mulched area, potentially lawn space, like, open space in there for that. But like, that's just from, there would be a couple of other restrictions. But the main thing is, the short answer is, we might, yes, could extend that down, like, for a fenced area in there, if, if we, if that's, that, we, yeah.
Okay, okay, because that's a lot of space right there. Okay, all right, that's, that's helpful. And then if, if you could bring up the fire station.
Yes.
Concept again, please. And I've always, I've always hoped that this site would work for a dog park. But I, I also want to echo, why are we, why are we putting the stormwater pond on our property for a private development? I'm having a little, I really need to understand that and understand why we're doing it for the development to the north of the fire station.
So, that is, that is part of the, they understand that they need some, that we are looking to develop on the rest of the, on the rest of the lot. And any impervious that we develop on there, they, they're already treating the impervious that is handling for the fire station up in this area. But anything on the remaining part of the lot would require some sort of impervious on there. So, they're trying to basically share the stormwater, like, they're trying to share between the impervious requirements of both the remaining parts of those lots. They, that's why they asked them to oversize it, to oversize the design so that it could treat whatever we're putting up on here, plus whatever they're putting over there. Just trying to partner together on that to help reach a solution for both properties.
So, I understand that, I understand that. I'm just, I don't, I don't like that. I don't have, but I, I, I don't, again, why, again, we, we need to maximize the use of the property that we own. And why are we, I'm not sure why we're giving up, like, like Satish mentioned, we're giving up o- over two acres of land here for private developments, stormwater needs. I'm, I'm really struggling with that and I have a really deep issue with that. So, I understand the concept that we want to partner, but I'm, I'm, we're giving up way too much. So, somebody needs to give me a really good explanation to why our two acres are worthy of helping somebody else's development.
Kyle, if I could, mayor, do you know if there's compensation involved from the dance studio to the town in terms of sharing that stormwater pond? Or is that something we need to ask Eric Pearson about?
Yes, Eric Pearson informed me that the dance studio would be paying for the, would be paying for the construction of the pond on our, on the town's behalf. So, they would be paying for essentially building all of it.
So, we'll get you some clarification around that, Mayor Protem, as far as what that payment is and how that factors into long-term costs and other things.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that. And again, everything, I've said this repeatedly over the years, everything we do is a balance. So, I, I understand that. But, yeah, I need a little more information to understand why we're, we're giving up so much land.
So, the other thing I'll mention is the, you asked about the northern pond. So, we'll get you some information about the southern one. The northern one is more involved with the fact that the property we purchased is part of a POA out there. And so, we are by default a member of that POA. So, that is a shared pond that already exists that is utilized structurally by a building to the north that, that's outside of our property. But we had looked at, look, could we just upgrade that existing stormwater pond to try to handle the capacity that would be needed for what we were doing at the fire station? And it was determined that it would actually be more efficient and cheaper to do a separate new stormwater pond that would, that would handle the, the fire department's needs from a cost standpoint. So, that's where we are with that one and I'll verify that information because I'm sure the next question is, well, couldn't we spend a little more and just do the one? We'll get you information on that as well.
I appreciate that, thank you. Because there's more than, there's a few of us probably have that concern, so.
Understand.
Thank you. And then the last couple of comments I'll make are just kind of general. The last time, the presentation showed the depth of mulch was different on the different concepts. But you're, you're now saying across the board, there's this eight inches of mulch that would be, on whatever concept we choose, would be the way to go.
So, we're estimating eight inches of mulch, mulch for both concepts and then just trying to make sure that we, it's basically going to come down to wear and tear. We're estimating for Harris, for Harris Mill, probably around three inches of mulch per year just because it settles over time. It settles about, I believe about, up to 33%. So, it would go from about eight inches to down to six inches. So, give or take in that, in that range. So, we were just trying to make sure that we can replenish it up to that point and keep it standard eight inches in that area.
Okay, okay. And then, I know we talked about the fencing and you came back with some additional information on fencing. I, I really would like to know what is the standard height of a dog park fence? I'm not sure we need to build really high to keep dogs inside. If the standard and in other dog parts, the standard is whatever it is, I think we should go with the standard. I, I, you know, I don't, I've not talked to a whole lot of dog owners that go to dog parks, but the few I have, dogs typically want to stay in a dog park because they're trying to play with the other dogs. And I don't, I'm not a dog owner, I'm a cat owner. So, I gotta, I have to go to others for expertise. So, I'm not sure the height is really that important. So, I'd really like to know what the standard is on other dog parks and what works.
I have seen, I mean, again, I mean, I know, so, from previous discussions about it, I think five feet generally tends to be within that range of, I mean, again, it's a difference from dog park to dog park. But five feet generally tends to be what I, sort of a rough average for that. I can, I can take another look at that and provide if there's a different standard somewhere or other places are doing differently. But I've estimated around five feet, give or take, with like, it's what, what I've seen in a couple of other places.
Okay, okay. And then lastly, I know you talked a lot about amenities and all kinds of play structures and even bike racks. And I, I'm not sure we need to, we need to go down that route. I'm not even sure we need a bike rack. I'm not sure, I, I think you're either going to walk with your dog to a dog park or you're going to drive to the dog park with your dog. I don't, I, I don't, I don't know that many dog owners that run with their, or bike ride with their dog running alongside. Although that, I certainly have seen that. So, I would, I would say let's, because the, I guess I'm concerned that, I'm just concerned with the cost. So, just want to make sure we, we get a dog park first, first and foremost. And then last question, where's all this money coming from? But I'm sure we'll hear about that because the next, next topic is budget, so.
So, I will answer regarding the bike rack question. That's actually in our UDO that put these types of developments, that we need to have a certain number of bike racks with these types of parking lots in, in these areas there. So, this is just trying to meet some of the requirements that we have in the UDO that we got and planning on that. So, we need at least three bike, three bike racks in those locations for a certain number of parking spaces, so to speak. So, that's just trying to help accommodate the requirements early on.
Okay, so our UDO requires bike racks based on the number of, the number of spots in a parking lot?
But that, I mean, yes, you know, I'm pretty sure that it's either number of spots or for the development.
I don't understand the correlation, but okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. I'll go and then followed by Councilmember Row. So, I too, I think, really want to move forward with the dog park. I really like the Franklin Upchurch concept a lot better. Let me talk about Mills first, though. I'm also concerned about us essentially donating stormwater amenity to a thing. I don't think the trade-off land is too valuable for us to go ahead and give up some of our very limited land. It would have to be a large cost for the stormwater to balance that out. But I much prefer the Franklin Upchurch for a number of reasons. One being that it's another place to have parking to access our greenways. Right now, Cedar Fort Tristick Park is really the best place to park and access our greenways. So, we need other points of entry for that. I was very happy to hear that you answered, Vicki Scroggins-Johnson, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson's, about the water being included. God Bold Park has a really innovative water system where the dogs, where it automatically fills within the site. So, if that's a possibility, that would also be nice. Also at God Bold, they were able to retain a number of the trees, which makes it a much nicer place and provides some of its own shade. So, I think it's worthwhile to indicate to the designer that we'd really like to keep some of those trees for shade and for just, it's a more attractive amenity in that way. I really enjoyed Councilmember Rabadi's suggestion that even though we moved most of it to the other side of the utility easement, we do have that other space. And if we put the small dog park over there or something, that might work really well. And even if we go with this initial concept, it maybe, it's good to pour the concrete for the entry there right away, just in case we do actually build some fencing on that side. I like the idea of having a, a full one acre for the large dogs and then a smaller on the other side. A quick question, do we have to have larger stormwater to do the fence? have to have larger stormwater to do the fenced-in dog park area? That's pervious, right? So we don't have to?
So if we put a, if we put a, if we put like a small dog, like another fenced area on this side over here, most likely we would need to either split out this side, we would need to either like move one of these onto the other side, or just try to drain it so that some, it would drain out to this, towards this way, so to speak.
I'm thinking just southeast of the parking lot. That seems like a big triangle there, just above the stormwater treatment label. That seems like it would be a good place. That's where the original dog park concept was. So that's what I was thinking.
Oh, right.
Yeah, that seems like a good small dog park area, like it was before. So I'm not sure, if we put in more fenced area, does that indicate that we need more stormwater? Or is the stormwater just really addressing the pervious, impervious?
Most likely stormwater, like stormwater department, again, would want us to treat it, even if the dog parks were separated like what you're, what you're suggesting, they would like us to probably treat both of those in order just to treat, make sure that the water is draining off, doesn't go un, go untreated into the rest of the stream or into the larger hatchet creek strength system, so to speak.
Okay. So if we went with this and we added some more fencing later, we'd have to add more stormwater later?
Most likely, yes.
Okay. I'd also be very curious if it's possible to bring any of this design in-house. For $100,000, that's an FTE for a year. That would be kind of interesting to have this capability in-house rather than outsourcing it. That's not a question for you so much as more of a, an overall larger concept. As we're doing more designs, we're hoping to do more park work. It'd be good to be able to keep that in-house and develop our institutional wisdom. Is there any lighting for this concept, lighting? Or will it close at dusk? Will there be lighting for?
There is some money in there for lighting.
Okay.
Yes. Give me a second. So like for the, let me scroll down to the additional amenities. So we are estimating for the dog park lighting, if we decided to do it as an upgraded amenity and add some additional lighting onto there, that would be about, in the ballpark of $10,000, in $10,000 or so for that. So for like parking lot lighting, if we wanted to do additional lighting around the dog park for that, it would still be within that, within that range, give or take.
Okay. I would very much support having lighting. In the winter, 5 o'clock, it's dark. People are getting home, they want to take their dogs to a dog park. So that is something. And I, I support the upgraded amenities list. I think it's going to be important to do that little extra bit to make it a little bit more attractive. So I would like to support the upgraded amenities list. That would be my hope, to do that. A couple more little things.
Understood. Thank you.
I also like the idea of using the gas line easement area for something. I know we can't build a sidewalk on it, but that looks like some good usable space. If we're able to retain a lot of the trees, there might be an area for picnic tables or something by the parking lot. So activating that space would be nice. Okay. And one last thought. We're talking about the size of the fence. Is this designed so the fence actually goes down like a foot into the ground to prevent dogs from digging under it? Because this isn't going to be a place where we have staff. Is that a standard thing to do?
We would, we would, we're limited in how deep we can dig. So we would have to make sure that whatever fence that we dig isn't too far down and that's not, it would have to remain, again, keep it relatively at ground level. We could dig a little bit, but make sure that we're not directly over, whatever columns there are, aren't directly over top of where the natural gas line is.
Oh, yeah. I know we're not touching the gas line at all, but I just want to make sure that we're doing standard, digging down deep enough that dogs can't go under. So just like asking, what is the standard height? If there's a standard depth as well. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Great presentation. Thanks for making all these changes. And one other thing, if it's possible to accelerate this, I'd be very much in favor of seeing if there's a pathway to authorize this quicker and try to get some construction started in calendar year, calendar year '22 rather than next year. So I'd be very interested in knowing if that's going to cost more to accelerate it, or if it's just a matter of changing our priorities as dictated and guidance from the council. Because I think this is something that's been in the works for a long time. And to wait a whole nother count, a whole 12 months from now, I'd rather make that shorter if possible. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao then, and then anyone else who has last comments before we do a second round. Councilmember Rao?
Yeah, I prefer the first concept for a lot of the reasons stated. I think it's closer to the town hall, which I like, the town center. Concerned about the stormwater issue on the Harris Mill. And I, I, the lighting issue I was going to bring up, so you answered my question on that. I also believe that in the last, last campaign, a lot of the doors I knocked on, I heard this issue a lot, just people along, across Mooresville about a dog park. So I'd be in favor of whatever we can do to accelerate it. But I really like these concepts, and I just want to thank you for putting this much work into this. Thank you for putting so much work into this presentation. It's been very helpful.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Fender, please?
Yeah, I agree with most everything that's been said. I'm in favor of the Franklin Upchurch site. And I really like Councilmember Robati's suggestion of keeping existing trees where we can. Because you had $10,000 there for shade structures, but if you could use natural shade, you could save money, maybe. But yeah, I liked the idea of saving trees where it's feasible. That's all I have.
Okay. Everyone's had a, a chance to share their thoughts and ask questions. I'd like to give everyone an opportunity to circle back. Councilmember Caramella?
Question I have is the stormwater treatment. Do we have that in our UDO? Like to have a stormwater treatment for pervious surface? Or because I'm, I have not seen that in our UDO.
I didn't catch, I'm sorry.
Do we have stormwater treatment in our UDO?
Can I get that in?
Stormwater treatment in our, in our UDO?
For pervious, for, impervious, I get it. For pervious, I've never seen that in like 80 years that even we tried to do that.
Councilmember Caramella, I think Assistant Town Manager Rodriguez can help us with that question.
The stormwater requirements are part of the EDCM, which are the engineering design standards. And the UDO in multiple areas within the document do call out to the EDCM to say additional details are provided on the engineering standards. And the engineering standard manual does the job of going through all the specifics related to the stormwater requirements.
Yeah, but I, I, I understand that. But it's almost equivalent to a park that you're trying to create. You know, I have two concerns. Like if the idea is to catch all the dog by a waste and that into it, you know, it'll smell. And, but is that done in other towns that they do? Because I have not seen like a stormwater treatment for a dog park. First time I'm hearing it. That's why I'm questioning, not like, I understand the regular stuff, it is all okay. But this one, it's kind of new to me.
I, I believe the main reason for that is related to the water quality. Because obviously the waste from dogs do impact water quality considerably. So what that does, it helps clean the water before it drains into the waterways.
Yeah, but is that in our UDO? To mandate to do that is what I'm trying to come to? Or you think there's supporting documents that kind of cover that?
It's part of those things that the town is required to enforce as part of the stormwater permit that are included within the requirement, the stormwater requirements. If there's additional information that we can provide, we could certainly do that. There's additional nutrient requirements that are coming back to the town. They were suspended for a period of time, and they're now coming back to be enforced. So it could potentially be impacting some of that as well. But we can certainly find more information about that.
So in future, like if it is a regular park, you don't need stormwater treatment? I'm, I'm trying to basically create the distinction.
So if I, if I could kind of sum up, none of us here has all the experience about stormwater. So we, let us bring you back the answers. I think we're clear on what your questions are about stormwater on both properties. I've, I've heard general consensus for a Franklin Upchurch, but we aren't established in what that's going to look at yet. So I think you've got another round of work that, that you've charged Randy and Kyle with looking at with, with some of the things. You'd really, as we've talked about with other, you want your design finalized before we start expending that money. So I think we're, at this point, my sense is focusing on the one property and a little bit more work to do to maybe address this round of questions. And then we can bring back some additional information, in particular on stormwater for both properties.
Okay. I'd like to, Councilmember Robati, followed by Mayor Protam Johnson?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I appreciate Mayor Colley's suggestion about utilizing the rest of the land on, in this area. We really want to avoid, specifically the picnic table idea made me think of it. We really want to avoid anything on that area that's going to make people want to hang around there with their dogs outside the fences, even if they're on a leash. So picnic tables, bad idea. Just because then, you know, people are going to, they're going to go out there with their dog, they're going to sit at a picnic table, you know, their dog's going to be on a leash, but there's going to be 50 other dogs within 100 feet of him. It, it's a recipe for disaster. So if we're going to do something else with that area, we want it, we want to do something that you absolutely cannot do with a dog. Basketball courts, tennis, you know, I don't know, like biking trails, whatever. But we want something on there that's going to be separate from the dog park, that's going to have a different clientele, in my opinion.
Okay. Mayor Protam Johnson?
Just two, two, two little quick comments. Well, one's a question. The, the greenway is supposed to be extended through this property. Is that indicated on your concept, Kyle? The extension of the greenway? Do we know where that's going to be? The extension for the greenway that's coming from?
There's a little bit here, and it's maybe a little bit, but there we go. So the hatchet creek, so that, that connector is right here. This is already existing through this location through here. It does end, give or take, right about this spot right here. While they're working on the road, like widening right now, they're going to be pulling it up once it's done and tying it in somewhere in this general vicinity of where the, for people to cross out that area that we do.
Thank, thank you for pointing that out. I wasn't sure. Perfect. Thank you. And then just a, just a last general concept. I, I think, I want to echo what the town manager said. Manager Page was right. I think you hear consensus kind of around this concept, tweaking here and there. And, and I would just say again, thank you very much for bringing this all to us. You know, we're really focused on giving the amenities to our citizens that they ask for. And so we're going to be, I think, a little picky about making sure we get it right. So, so I appreciate you coming back again the second time now and probably have to come back one more time. And I, I appreciate that very much. It'll make for a better product in the end that we're all going to be really happy with and a better amenity for, for our citizens. So, thank you.
Okay. I don't see any more. I'd echo the fact that, thank you very much for all the hard work that went into this. Look forward to hearing the stormwater answers. Is it, would it also be a summary to say that the thing that they're going to look at and tweak is the idea of having the small dog park right near the parking lot? Or is there more? Because Randy mentioned that Kyle has already, has that concept kind of already drawn up. So is there anything else besides that about this site? So we don't have to send them back again? Or is that pretty much the only thing that's stopping us from going?
Yeah, I think the stormwater questions are going to drive some of that decision about where those places are going to be on that parcel.
Okay. But that was pretty much the only thing that's holding us back right now, besides the funding? Would that be accurate to everybody?
Besides the what?
The funding and where it comes from.
Funding, yeah.
Okay, great. Do you have what you need, gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Great job. Appreciate it. It is 7:05 now. Why don't we take a 10-minute break? Will that be sufficient for everybody? We'll reconvene at 7:16. Thank you very much. Town Manager Page, ready to reconvene? Okay, we're coming back in the session at this time for the budget preview and CIP workshop. I'd like to recognize Jeannie Hooks, Director of Management Services, and Martha Page, Town Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. It's good to be with you this evening. So we're here tonight to talk about, at a very high level, your budget preview and your CIP update. So I'm just going to walk through real quick what are our workshop goals for this evening. I'm going to touch on just a glimpse of your, of really where we think at a, at a high perspective, thinking big picture, it's not about the numbers tonight, of where we think the budget, your budget interest that we've heard from council and we've heard from the community, how it's influenced where our budget development is today and our CIP. And then we're going to touch and go into our CIP just a little bit and explain really how we're going to potentially make some adjustments to sort of advance a few things. And then we're going to set the stage for that major CIP update that's going to come as, as required by your CIP policy that you had adopted years ago. And then I'm going to turn it over to Michael James, our fiscal recovery officer. He's going to give you a quick update about the American Recovery Plan. So to set the stage tonight, again, this is all about the big picture. I need to say that a second time. And it's not about the numbers game. It's talking about really how those, those things we heard you say and what we heard from the community, how we think we can put a recommended budget together. This is a part of this finalization of your front-loaded process that you were interested in, where you got to put your hands on it and the community got to put their hands on the development phase of the process of our budget development and CIP. Okay? Is everybody ready to go?
Would you like questions during or wait till the end?
We have a feedback Q and A at the end after, after Michael wraps up. If there's a burning question that pops up with the slide, fine to take it at that point. But we want to keep on point. So that's why we have that slide at the end. You good with that?
It works for us.
Okay. All right. So we went over workshop goals. So always like to be again with the end in mind. What am I going to tell you? What are you going to hear? So summoning it up is really all about, again, what we heard from you during the brainstorming processes, what we felt like we heard through the portal comments with the community, and how we try to align up those focused and interest areas with how we think we can align resources. We have several resources. We'll talk about those in the end. Again, community has, council and community has influenced this front-ended process, very much so, to get us to this point that we're at today. And staff has worked to, to behind the scenes to sort of get us where we think we are about ready to wrap up this budget development process to have a recommended budget. So as always, in budgeting and CIP, you're always going to hear more needs and asks than there are potentially resources. And that's really the same thing that we deal with every year. And it all boils down to what is the biggest, greatest priority? What are the things you value most that you need to see in this budget to bring to fruition for the community to begin activating? Or in a lot of cases, what we're talking about is finishing what we've already started in many ways. So some of the things, oops. Oh, there it goes. So some of the things just to touch on is we have anticipated, or there the, there's the planned expectation of that three cent. We heard loud and clear from council that you want that dedicated to those bond projects. So that means none of that three cents is for operational, has an operational influence. It's all about the activation of those capital projects that are associated with bonds. The other thing is that we are planning and anticipating for, because we've communicated and heard from council, a consensus, and that is the anticipation of stormwater fee. That is intentionally to also right-size our program in accordance to the mandate so that we can deliver services effectively and more so to create and align and deliver on capital improvements as a result of a study. So that's a pretty critical step that we're building in here. Some of the feedback that we heard loud and clear from council and from the community is we want some quick wins. So some of the things that we can do in this particular program in aligning our resources, all resources that we can tap into. in aligning our resources, all resources that we can tap into, will allow us to potentially do some of those quick wins for the community, and we'll talk more about those. We heard about the importance of us to continue investing in our future. Those are those things where we're putting money aside today for tomorrow, that building up our capital reserve funds so that we can create shovel-ready projects for the future, CIP things, or to get things started sooner in advancing them and moving them forward. We did some pretty innovative things and, and some startups, and that includes Smart Shuttle, maintaining that momentum, keeping it going. And of course, our Smart Cities solution with our MobLab. We have another phase that we need to work towards to bring that to fruition. So those are some examples. But I think a pretty cool startups in Morrisville. And then, of course, with our sustainability program and having a master sustainability plan to give us guidance, we can now effectively start moving towards bringing to fruition those overall goals that you will, of course, see with the master sustainability plan. Keeping a weather eye on recovery is really important. So you'll hear more about that. Controlling the reoccurring cost, and why is that important, is again, you are dedicating the full three cent of the tax rate increase towards capital projects. There's no opportunity to use that for operational needs. So what does that mean? We have to live within the resources, that natural growth in revenues that we expect each year. So we're managing and controlling those reoccurring costs. As we told you, we are getting closer and closer, the growth in our, our reoccurring costs is getting closer and closer to that, that line of reoccurring revenues and the growth in which it occurs naturally each year. Limited personnel growth and capacity. So we'll, I'll expand on that just a little bit. Really what that means in a nutshell is you have space issues, and you also have resource issues to be able to expand. Your largest expense is your, your people, your workforce or who delivers the services. But being able to expand that within a natural growing curve of revenues that are growing at 3%, and we've added quite a few over the past years, we've done a really good job of building it. But we're at that point where we probably have to settle and look at where we are with our, with our revenue, recurring revenues to our reoccurring expenses, because personnel are your biggest ongoing recurring cost. Of course, we've got a number of plans that are in the work. What am I talking about there is affordable housing, is your land use plan. Those are, those are things that we need to finish. Those really guide our work. They set policy foundation and allow staff to really maximize the use of public funds for the greater good of the community. With having that guidance is really critical. So finishing up that work will help us into the future. And of course, other things, managing other replacement assets. Often talk about fire, but it's really more than just fire assets that, that we are working to have a comprehensive plan on. It's tech equipment. It's all of those things that we need in order to, for your workforce to actually do the work, the good work that they do for the community. And then we, we're talking a lot about workforce is safeguarding our market competitiveness is pretty paramount in this region. So you'll hear a little bit about that, too. So again, lots of council and community influence. And really summing it up are really what we think we're at in terms of developing a recommended budget at this final point. So in our budget calendar, just a picture here, again, front-loaded process here and calling out really your, your efforts in March with your brainstorming activities. One that I missed here, and I should have put that there, was your portal for the community and that they answered the same types of questions that council answered. And we put those together and tried to figure out what filtered to the top, what were the common things, and how can we align resources to that. That was the part of your front-loaded process. And of course, we added this particular work session at this time. We've not had this work session at this interval in any of our budget development years. So this is also that, that new final step to get us to a recommended budget. And then from there, we pick up the, the natural process, coming May 10th, and presenting a recommendation to you. And we've infused quite a few elements, new elements in this timeline that we hope that has worked for you. And of course, we are looking for the goal, the end game is that adoption of that budget hopefully on June 14th, if not by June 28th, or sooner. Hey, I'm up for that. So here's where I'm gonna stay as high a level as I can, but I wanted to give you a flavor of what a budget and CIP package could look like at this point, applying and aligning those resources to fulfill the things that we've heard you say. So you'll see every year in replacement planning, we're all focused about the long-range approach. You know, if we don't look ahead, if we only look at a single year, we're not, nor not business savvy or fiscally responsible with the usage of our public funds and making sure that, that we are effective in applying resources and working towards not just tomorrow, but well into the future to create that sustainability. Having replacement plans is just one of those strategies and tools. In addition, your CIP plan is another long-range tool in which we can plan, we can see what might be coming in the future, and we can identify challenges, and more so opportunities that might come up. So that's why replacement planning is critically important. We can see those, those equipments, items, the very expensive fire apparatus, and we could start putting money side years ago to be able to pay for something that's coming up in the next couple of years. That's smart. Smart use of the public funds. So staging for the future is critically important. Improvements, here's where we talk about aligning to some quick wins for capitalizing on small projects, staging for shovel-ready items. What are, what could they be? They could be staging for creating design items for perhaps those intersection and sidewalk projects that are to come with your other bond issuances that will be ready, will be coming online in a future year. Having the ability to go ahead and tap into some resources and get that design ready for when that construction money can come in and reimburse ourselves, that's just, again, another long-range strategy, a long-range approach, but getting things moving. We have some safety initiatives. Heard loud and clear from you folks in your brainstorming session that public safety was really important to you. So public safety is more than just about fire and police resources. It's all about even the public safety when they go and walk down our sidewalks and when they walk on our greenways. So there's some assessments that are going on right now for, for pedestrian safety, for sidewalk safety. We want to be able to exercise and put into place those initiatives. So we're using some funding for that. And then small impactful community projects. We'll talk a little bit more about that in the CIP, but they're park-related and intersection-related is where we're sort of focusing our work. Plans, it's all about setting the stage for the future. We have a lot of plans in motion. It's important to finish those up. We talked about smart cities and sustainability. Policy guidance is a critical backbone for, for any kind of unique innovative initiative. So both with the sustainability and the smart cities, having those master plans in place to guide us, our work helps us plan for budgets and really how we can be effective for the community for what are really innovative, innovative items. And having assessments on how to effectively use solar and EV in Morrisville, what works best for Morrisville, that's what that assessment will help us understand. And we spend our money most effectively and get the biggest bang for our buck. That's good use and alignment to community interest. And of course, we always want to maintain what we've already gleaned, which is momentum in our Smart Shuttle program. Here, we could be looking at amenity enhancements, really beefing up what we already have, and then, of course, a couple of nodes as a part of the plan. And then embracing community outreach themes. The sustainability has a component of, of a community theme. We have other pride opportunities and, of course, smart city solution ideas as well that are, that are in the hopper. So that in a, in a nutshell is really previews at a very high level without getting into the nuts and bolts, but it's something that we are putting together in our, the double element of our, our recommended budget as we have heard from you and aligned resources at this point. So let me jump to the next slide, because this is one, I think, is very important. We talked a bit about workforce and how they're so critically important about delivering and sustaining what is a core item in your sum-up slide, which is about sustaining core service focus. We heard from council how important that was to you. We have quality services, and in order to maintain them, we need to be able to make sure that we remain market competitive and keep knowledge base that we built and have acquired, we need to retain it and keep it and attract even more. So having a full package here is important to keep that edge. In this particular region, is pretty much a hot market in, in the Wake County region that people are working continuously to try to pull people, just like we pulled this one from, from Wake County. They're, they're doing it to us as well. And we need to make sure that Morrisville is on that cutting edge and remaining market competitive. So our total compensation, compensation package becomes critically important for us to pay attention to. Health is not just about the healthcare. It's also about retirement. It's about the pay, how we relate and compare to our peers. We are expecting to maintain at this particular interval our performance merit plan as it was proposed at 3% meets, 4.5% exceeds, and 6% far exceeds. But with that said, we need to always pause and take a look at our neighbors. What's going on there? Where do we need to raise the bar if necessary? So I'm gonna pause there and see if Town Manager Page wants to weigh in on influence of our peers.
The managers have started sharing information through our listserv about COLAs and merits. And, and I'll just, we were ahead because we got started a little bit earlier, but there are aggressive actions being taken by many of our peer municipalities. Some are offering both COLA and merits and increasing those percentages. So, so we will have that information to share with you. Again, it's all preliminary as everybody's putting together their budget. So, but it is not just what we do, and it's, we talk about this, it's what everyone else around us does as well that we're trying to keep track of.
Okay. So factors and observations at this point, just to touch on a few, probably the most important, I've already said the first particular bullet, the most important I think I want to draw your attention to is really this higher inflationary factor and really supply chain issues that we're struggling with. We're not just struggling with those in operations, we're struggling with those in our capital side of the house. And you will probably hear a little bit about that with Fire Station at your April 25th meeting. But I just wanted to share with you, these are things that we have to consider and be mindful of as we are building budgets. If we have enough room and flexibility that you're giving your manager flexibility to work with and address what a rapidly changing economic environment. And right now, it's just escalating at this point. But we're experiencing both of these factors on, on both sides of the house, the operations and the capital. So I just wanted to draw that particular point out. The other one is, and I've talked enough about, think about base budget. On average, it's grown over the past four years about 9% to 10%. So just wanted to give you a flavor of that. But we gotta pay attention to that as we are looking at sustainability and recurring natural growth in revenue. The other one I want to just call out here is Parks and Recs revenue. They have continued to, to experience impact of what I call post-COVID, post-pandemic items in terms of program registration or just being able to carry out the program, having adequate staffing for pools. People are still not necessarily wanting to do just everything they used to do two years ago in an open environment. And the fitness centers tend to be one of those places, our youth with our kids, another one in which some apprehension about being in programs. So we're still seeing some revenue recovery issues here. So that, that'll be something that you might see your proposal come forward as well. But still, have to pay, what am I saying? We have to be looking at the details, the small details here to make sure that we set the stage for success in what we provide in our budget and, and keep it on where we want to be, but don't contract too much. Because if you pull back on, on programs like this, then you're harming your community. You're not meaning your core sustainable services that people value. So we need to make sure that we keep things where they need to be and be able to provide those programs. But we have to recognize that there's impact there we also have to account for, and we have to bridge the gap. So what resources do we have? I will say to you that staff has probably assessed all creative options that we can this year to effectively fold in what we can to align to the interests we heard from council and from the community. Again, we were dealing with lesser capacity. As your base budget gets closer to your natural growth and revenue, you have less to work with for new one-time items or new added reoccurring costs. So as a result, we have been as innovative as possible, looking at all of our resources that include a number of things from ARPA all the way to repurposing savings from an existing capital project to providing resources or flexible use to your manager for lapse salary. You've heard us talk about that before. Controlled use of your fund balance, I'll talk about that one in a minute. We have effectively looked at all of our major revenue sources, and I'd say it's still a conservative approach on, on everything except your sales tax. Your sales tax, there is some opportunity there for a little more robust growth, but staff has maximized that potential without setting us up for risk or failure in the future if it doesn't materialize. Again, sales tax, you need to be careful because consumer confidence is pretty, pretty weighing on this source. And if it, if the economy shifts, you will start to see it in the next two to three months with materializing your sales tax, consumer stop spending. So we want to make sure that we don't overextend ourselves. Right-sizing, again, the stormwater fee for both operations and capital is gonna be critical. And the other one, just to mention here, is we heard loud and clear from council that solid waste fee, we're deferring it this year. So we heard you weren't ready for that with the onset of a stormwater fee and then, of course, the three cent tax rate increase that comes with the bond. Steady growth, the good news is steady growth in your biggest revenue source, that's tax base, it's still holding true at 3%, strong. Lots of new projects on the horizon that help impact and help see sustainability into the future, well into the future for Morrisville. Opening up an essential corridor with McCrimmon Parkway extension was huge. You're gonna start seeing that return on that investment as you already have, really, from opening up and putting that public investment in place. Opportunity to exist on the horizon to keep in mind for operations is your revaluation. The activity is gonna start in fiscal year '24, but it's going to hit in fiscal year '25. That's when you're gonna be asked to project revenue neutral, what that tax rate is. But that's another opportunity for council to consider if the political will desires is for you to right-size your operations. So again, I just say that as something on the horizon. Again, that depends on what's happening in the world at that time, but it is an opportunity, as you took advantage of this last time, where you retain some of that market growth in order to be able to put towards operations and to activate capital projects and get them going. All right. I'll pause there before we get into capital investment projects and see if there are any questions. Ready to go? I like that. All right. So capital investment. We're gonna touch on the timeline. I'm gonna talk a little bit about adjusting the current plan. What can we do now to create some additional quick wins and advance some things? We're gonna target on what those items are and talk about really what else should we be considering when we're trying to move things forward. Then I'm just gonna touch on for you and set the stage for where are we going in the future in accordance to your CIP policy about that major update where you go through a big work, staff goes through a big work, very comprehensive resetting of your five-year CIP plan for the next four years. All right. So on the timelines, there's, again, two things happening here on this timeline. You have setting the stage, as I said, for your work in the major update, but you also have work that's being done with this budget cycle to sort of realign some resources based on what we heard from council and heard from the community to see if we can get some small wins in the project column and get some, some other things started that we're hearing from the community. So that's the two things to talk about really and focus on this timeline. So that's the two things to talk about really and focus on this timeline. I'll talk a little bit more about the process itself, but you see, it's a comprehensive process for the major update, and it's something that will come with fiscal year '24's adopted budget. You will be a part of this process all along to be driving the ship in where your future five-year CIP will land, and it will be a part of the 2024 adopted budget. What I'm doing with '23 is all about right sizing or realignment. I'm not going to talk too much about this, but this is your current CIP that was adopted with '22. This is the picture I'm working on to adjust and realign a few things. This is what's active or considered active and funded to some extent. There have been some changes that have impacted some of those funding sources with purchasing of land ahead of the bond referendum, land dollars that we will have to adjust for. I'm not going to focus too much more on that. Where I want to go is I want to talk about what we're working on to advance some things that are unfunded at this time. So here is the targeted projects that we think we might be able to work with, at least what I'm currently working in and sliding the scale, Budgetopia. Y'all just visualize Budgetopia, that's what I'm doing. So there's opportunities, as you heard and as you agreed, with International Drive, great opportunity there to be able to advance a connection. Dog Park, trying to move this forward and get that accomplished. Shiloh Park renovations, that is about the basketball court, and maximizing what we can do there, enhancing that program. That is literally putting, I'm going to try to infuse an unfunded project into your active CIP at this point. Getting shovel-ready for bond monies that are going to come in the second and third issuance of your bond monies, but that's getting ready now. So we want to advance some money in order to be able to get those designs done for intersection and pedestrian projects. Town Green, you've heard from Deputy Town Manager Zunima about things are moving. Town Green is one of those critical elements and pinnacle focal points in getting that area started, and we need to start planning for, that's the town's money, that's the town's project, public-funded project. So we need to start putting money aside. This was not a funded project. So again, something I have to work into the CIP picture to be able to create some funding solutions for you. Had some additional obligations come from the STIP through the Department of Transportation, we have responsibilities for the betterment cost, and those are both NC-54 and McCrimmon. Again, additional monies that I have to sort of work into that existing five-year picture for you. The other item, you heard us say, it's not just about the funding resources for staff, but it's also about the space that we have to put staff. So space needs with the Public Safety and Municipal Service Building renovations. You actually heard a presentation from Deputy Town Manager Zunima on this particular expansion running about a million at that particular time, again, cost escalation here. So at that time, it was estimating around a million. But you heard that at the same time you heard about Old Fire Station 1. So we got consensus on Old Fire Station 1, we did not get 100% consensus to move forward on PSMS, but it wasn't ruled out as an option for the future. So again, space needs are important. Establishing that separate CIP, that's where your fee is going to materially come in and allow you to start tackling what is potentially a 10-year CIP plan for stormwater of funding source each year to start focusing on those projects. All of these things really depend on, I will say for the most part, economic conditions to, in terms of inflationary cost, really being able to grapple with that, how much do we need to put aside, what kind of contingencies factor should we use? The other thing that it's going to impact as I start working these, advancing these projects, it's going to impact timing shifts for some other projects that were prioritized. And I'll try to walk you through or minimize that as much as I can, but we have to work within the availability of one-time resources, and we have to work within our debt capacity. So we worked really hard with Davenport to create a funding model for not just our bond projects, but for installment funding project, which is Public Works. And it's important that we realize this particular issuance coming up, see and understand what inflationary factors might be impacting our credit, our interest rates, and then redo that model to see, okay, did we gain capacity? Is there something more that we can do with our debt capacity? But we still have to work and manage within what capacity we have and what's affordable within the 3 cents. We are creatively trying to repurpose some other program reserves, and here's the bonus, we're going to leverage, we're proposing to leverage ARPA funds from the first tranche to activate some pretty critical and important, we think, important projects, small wins, small capital projects for the community and what we heard from them and what we heard from you, and then build in those new obligations that I talked about. So in terms of the major CIP process update, I will not go over all of this. I put this here really for your information. We're going to talk a lot more about this in future work sessions, but it is a major opportunity for you to reset what your five-year picture is going to look like for the future. And it's also a major opportunity for you to redefine your CIP policy. It was created and adopted back in 2015. It's time to look and refresh the criteria that you ask staff to evaluate projects against. That was in 2015, and I tell you, there's a drastic difference between how we should be evaluating projects, what criteria we should be bouncing them against, to where it was then, to where it should be today. And we need to take a hard look at that and right-size that criteria that you direct us to use. Again, your voice guiding us in our work. So that's probably all that I'll say about that. We'll have plenty of time to talk through this in the future, but at least gives you a flavor of where we're going. All right, so here also gives you a glimpse of current projects that are unfunded, and why is this page important? Here's where I'm telling you some things that are going to come, we're going to propose to change, why we potentially are changing them. An example here is the train depot. Staff's felt for a long time, this is really an amenity element, not a standalone project. It could be folded into a number of project concepts that already exist up here in this town, region. We don't own the property currently where the old depot used to be, where historically I've been told that it used to be. We don't have that control, but it's an amenity we think we can easily fold in and make more effective use than it be a project concept that you continuously put down at the bottom of your prioritization list all the time. This is one of those image things that's just easy to probably add into a project. Historic page, home site, opportunity's gone. That's actually under active private development. No need for that to stay in the CIP, so that would be one to remove as well. We proposed recombining the rec center and the multi-use meeting space. You know, this is maximizing like uses or complementary uses together and putting them in one package. We could also, in this particular project, consider senior amenity elements that could expand those programs. Again, like things within one project concept that might get better traction. And of course, shifting your one stormwater program currently in the CIP back with the others that were a result of the study. The ones highlighted in yellow are the ones that we're working to advance. That's your Shiloh Park, your Town Green, your intersection, some of your intersections, and of course, International Drive. Dog Park was already a part of your active CIP, I'm just trying to move it up for you to be able to activate it sooner. Here are some new proposed CIP projects. These, I won't go into huge details, these are those obligations of, at least the three in the front, future obligations we need to work with and better understand what's the town of Morrisville's role, particularly in the first one. And then clearly, we need to be planning for the NC-54 betterments and the McCrimmon betterments. Those on the STIP are targeted between '23 and 2025. So we have to plan to be ready to take care of our share of what they say is the town's cost for those betterments. More, again, more conversation to come on future CIP project concepts with the major update. Mainly, I just wanted to communicate what we're trying to move ahead and the realignment of funding in the existing one that you'll get with this budget. So that's it for me at this particular point. I would like Michael to share with you just a quick update, and then we'll open the floor to some questions, some final feedback and comments, and we'll get home. Michael?
Thank you, Jeanne, and good evening, council. It's good to be with you. Just a quick update on kind of where we have been with the American Rescue Plan Act and where we stand as we head into the fiscal year '23 recommended budget. And really, up until your winter meeting in late January, our focus was really on how, or excuse me, really on what we could spend the ARPA funds on. So that's first with the interim final rule, and then when the final rule was released by Treasury in early January. And so we were kind of spending that time focusing on the eligible uses, some of the reporting requirements, and the timeline for spending those funds, all the things that directly related to the law itself. In February and March, we really shifted focus to how we have to spend those funds. So in addition to understanding the law itself, there's also federal regulations, primarily the uniform guidance, that really directs the procurement process requirements, other policies and procedures that the town has to have in place. So we spent considerable time reviewing all of our existing policies and evaluating those, and then making some tweaks, and we'll actually be bringing a couple of policies to you for adoption next week on the 25th. So that was kind of the compliance phase, and then once we, now that we have kind of completed that assessment and have policies to bring to you, our focus will be on kind of institutionalizing that and training departments on all of those requirements as well. So that's kind of that final section there on building out our process and just ensuring that that's efficient for all of our departments that are implementing all of the ARPA projects. So you can shift. Shifting to the next slide, as I'm sure you all remember, in the current year budget, we committed about $2 million of the first tranche, which was a little over $4.5 million. And so we've committed that, appropriated funds for several of the items there that are listed at the top. As Jeanne just mentioned a few minutes ago, that does leave some additional availability with the first tranche that we are evaluating and considering as sources for the recommended budget that you'll see in a few weeks. And of course, we appreciate all of your time and providing your feedback, which we'll be considering as we align the ARPA dollars to projects in the recommended budget. And then for the second piece there, which would be our second tranche, which we expect to receive in July, so early fiscal year '23, you know, we're kind of looking at future evaluation for that, how could we use those funds? Again, keeping in mind the feedback that we've already got from you, feedback that we may, will receive through the community survey and any other type of community or council engagement that you all are interested in. So that's kind of where we stand at this time as we get ready to head into the recommended budget. That's all I have, I'll turn it back over to Jeanne, unless you have questions.
All right, we're going to open the floor for wrap-up, for final budget comments or feedback, any questions you may have for Michael. And just remember, we're going to have plenty of time to talk about CIP, the major update piece. So if you have something specifically associated with that that's time sensitive, we can certainly address that tonight, otherwise, it's something we can talk about in the future. So I'll just open the floor. Mayor?
Okay, I'll recognize Councilmember Earl.
Yeah, I have a, just have two questions, just comments. In terms of the Shiloh basketball renovations, would that include, and I'm just curious, would that include lighting and some of the, I mean, what would that really include? Because I'm looking at, we've had a lot of positive feedback about basketball courts recently, and so my strategy would be whatever we could do to get those courts renovated up to standard, what these people want. And then I know the Director of Parks and Rec has looked, Randy Little's, I think, staff is looking at options for other places for courts. So could you talk about where that would fit in our process and what we could do to accelerate that?
Council, Deputy Manager Zunima, you want to touch on Shiloh, just in a nutshell, the amenities that you were looking at?
Sure. So it will include a full replacement of the existing basketball court to bring it up to those higher sort of standards. It will include new fencing, it will include lighting, it'll include some border around it so you're not, you know, playable space to grass sort of thing. It also includes an upgraded playground that would be ADA accessible, and then just some other general amenity improvements, but those are the highlights of what will happen there.
Okay, okay, that's all I need to know. One final.
Let me address the second part of your question though, because I think that's really important. Council has not given us guidance and direction to go looking for other basketball courts. That is something we anticipate council may talk about, but then that becomes part of your CIP prioritization process. You've gotten a lot of input and feedback, but council has not provided direction that they want to make that a CIP priority. That's part of your discussion.
Okay, so that's part of the process. Do we bring that up? Is it going to be a roundtable item, or how do we?
I think sharing that kind of information now would probably be appropriate.
Okay, I was just sharing that information, but I'd like council to consider that. The second high-level point, you said, and Michael, thank you for your presentation, in terms of the details of the small business appropriations and things like that, is that going to be something that details we're going to get in the next presentation? I know that Congresswoman Ross had secured $300,000, but those details, so is that, are those lined with these efforts here?
Martha, do you want to take that question?
You're talking about the $300,000 we've been awarded? So I think Michael mentioned today, he's been in touch with Congresswoman Ross's office to determine when that money may be coming to us. We do not have that money yet, we just have the notice of the award. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So when we requested that earmark, we put some justification and rationale for how we would develop that program in the earmark, that in fact, Michael and I and Ben McQuerry, who was our small business intern and is still doing some work for us, started talking about fleshing out, I'll call it, the criteria that we put in that to develop the comprehensive program to utilize that money as we requested it.
Okay. Thank you. I've got six more questions, just joking.
Okay, I'll recognize Councilmember Chicago Johnson and Councilmember Robody after that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. If we could go to the slide that talks about the unfunded priority items. There we go. So this is the reshuffling that we're going to have some more conversations about, but these are the staff recommendations to help us elevate the current projects such as the Dog Park and some other items. I'm a little sensitive about removing the historic page home site, although I know the land has another use for that. When you look at the public facilities, Pew House, could we possibly combine some language or elements about the Pew House and historic structures or something like that? Because I think to remove the page reference is, the page house is so significant to the history of the town and what's happened there, you know, with train wrecks and historic battles and such, that maybe the Pew House definition needs to be expanded a little bit about history, because we don't really seem to have a category that really references Morrisville history. So that might be something to consider.
So it's about the history, not losing that as an important interest of So it's about the history, not losing that as an important interest of council and capital planning?
Right. You know, we just added, after a lot of discussion, a cultural assign, you know, someone assigned in our Park and Recs division to really look at cultural activities, events, and so forth. Part of that expansion could be historic information or historic activities or historic awareness. And I don't want to lose some of our history as we're going through this process. So I'm okay for removing the homesite-specific parcel of land, but I don't, I want some of those elements about the history combined with the Pew House. And maybe we rename it slightly to reflect those historical buildings or something like that.
Good feedback. I appreciate that. If council as a whole has interest, we can consider that.
Right. Right. Well, that's why I spoke early, so other people can comment. And that's all I have for now. I'll have other comments later. I really like the attention that you had to what our comments have been over the past several months. So thanks, love.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robati, followed by myself.
Yeah. Jeanne, where in the, maybe this isn't a CIP project, but where are the updates and the, the changes that we're going to have to make at Church Street Park to accommodate the new cricket activities?
So those are already active, built into your funding. They've already actually had a capital project ordinance appropriating dollars for them and recognizing the funding source that will come from the ACE agreement. So town has already taken in care of that and squared it away. It's an active project moving through the process.
Right. But weren't we going to have to furnish an additional, like, $1.5 or $2.5 million for that?
So I believe, and, and--
You can go to the chair.
Deputy Manager Zudema, you may need to help correct me on this. I believe it was $1.2 was coming from the ACE agreement, and I think $2.25 was coming from the town of Morrisville. So we have the portion for the existing Church Street Park, where we're working with ACE to beef up the amenities there in order for them to have that international play. And then we are taking ownership and responsibility for the Southern Lot amenities that I think is the $2.2. Am I correct?
Yes.
Right. But I'm just saying that it's, so that's already funded, is what you're saying?
Yes. It's already funded and appropriated. It's a, it's an actual capital project with the town of Morrisville.
Okay. So it's on the list where--
Right.
Earlier in the presentation where some of them said "active," that's one of those?
Yes.
Oh, I see.
Church Street Park expansion. Sorry, I should have turned to that sooner. I want to answer all your questions, right?
But it doesn't actually say "active." It says that it was seventh in the prior, in the council ranking, right?
Active projects--
At all charges.
We've moved it ahead as a result of the opportunity. That is one of those things I have to account for that impacted this year. You had an opportunity. It influenced really funding that we had planned in the CIP that moved it up in the middle of this fiscal year that I now have to account for. We've used and tapped resources for that.
Okay.
Because you had an opportunity, and your CIP policy does allow that for you as council when you recognize those opportunities to direct us, to say, hey, once in a lifetime, something we need to work on, let's see if we can get that done. And I just need to reshuffle that and the alignment. That is part of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll go, followed by Councilmember Fender. So first, I'd like to echo the thought from Councilmember Schraggins-Johnson to add historical recognition or preservation to the Pew House line as we do lose the page house. I'd also like to support Councilmember Rao's thought of directing staff to look for more basketball court opportunities. I know the Southern Lot is expected to have one there, but if we could have one or two more, and I'd put forth possibly sand volleyball somewhere as well. There's been some talk of sand or grass volleyball. We used to have that at MAFC, but we lost that. When we lost that, or the basketball court. In regards to input from residents, I was wondering if, Jeanne, if it's possible to word cloud the input from the residents? Your word clouds have been really helpful, maybe one for items that people want to remove and another one for the ones that they're positive about or want to add. I think that might be a nice way to sort of make that cogent, that really, all that information. I was wondering if there's possible, we're talking about intersection improvements being part of the CIP and directing those, is it possible to update the intersection improvements online input portal to have the new revised look at all those intersection improvements so we can actively solicit input from the residents about those? I know Black Ridge Road, we need to get some more input about that one and to see which of those rise to the top. And the sooner we're able to start getting that input, the more it can be, we can get those shovel-ready, the ones in priority order. Is that clear, what I'm sort of saying?
Hmm?
Okay.
Thank you.
I was also thinking about the market competitiveness. I hear that staffing is an issue all across Wake County, and it's really challenging. So I'd like to do whatever we have to do. What can council provide to make Morrisville the place to have a fulfilling career and increase our retention? So I think we've tried to be really responsive when staff puts forth things that would help us be more competitive, but keep bringing those up. We want to lead there and not try to catch up, if possible, to that end. I know it's really challenging with lifeguards and stuff, but we spent a lot of money renovating MAFC, and I'd really like us to do whatever it takes, even if it's a lot of money right away, to utilize that large investment and have it open for the public seven days a week, all parts of it. Because something about, it's important that, like, if there's going to be a bus, you have to know that it's going to be there. You shouldn't have to look and know whether or not a bus is going to be running a certain day. You should be able to just go to MAFC and not know that it's only Tuesdays and Thursdays, for example. So I think it's really important that, that's an amenity that the residents voted to improve. We did a lot of work there, and I would like that to be open all the time. Do whatever it takes to do that. And those are my thoughts for now. I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I think you've really captured what we're looking to do and accomplish, the small wins. We're not getting into the weeds on those, but I'm looking forward to seeing all those in the line items when the proposed budget comes back in May. Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, first, I have a question. On the slide 14, where at the bottom it says "shift to SWCIP," what is SW?
Sorry, that's stormwater. The stormwater CIP will be separate to what I call the general funds CIP.
Okay.
Because it is a proprietary fund that's sourcing it.
Okay. Got it. And then a couple comments. I agree, or I share this same concern as Councilmember Schraggins-Johnson about, oh, concerned about removing the historic page homesite. Although I, I guess I was wanting a little bit more clarity, are we, or was Councilmember Schraggins-Johnson suggesting we would still want to keep the page house itself CIP-funded and not the land, or making it more generic than that? I could, so the CIP item for the historic page homesite is land that is privately held right now. We had wanted to have a park, and over like 15, 20 years ago, we actually had some events there, but that area, I do believe, is now going to be developed. However, the page house still exists. And so recognizing that historic structure is not directly in scope of that CIP item, although maybe we could add some language recognizing historic homes within the town of Morrisville that not only are the Pew House, but extend to recognition of the page home as well. Okay. With the thought of trying to save the page house? Trying to save that history in whatever form we might consider, you know, it's a very sensitive topic right now, but-- Okay. I, I would like us to save as much of our history as we can, because we are going to be, you know, doing a brand-new downtown and so forth. We have very few structures that were from the, you know, the original Morrisville when it was a real small village. Yeah. Okay. Got it. I understand. And then lastly is, I agree with Councilmember Rao and Mayor Colley about, I would like for the town to be exploring other areas, that we should include additional basketball courts and potentially beach volleyball courts.
Okay. And that was a great opportunity to share ideas. Mayor Pretam Johnson, please.
So I, I kind of agree with just about everything that's been said so far. So I just really want to make a overall, general comment about, to thank you, Jeanne, for bringing this to us, because you did capture everything we've said over the last couple of weeks and months. So I appreciate the way you've laid this out in the presentation, and thank you for listening so closely to each and every one of us. I will echo Councilmember Schraggins-Johnson's concept or thought about adding this historic designation somewhere in here, too. I agree. We've spent many, many years trying to preserve the history of this town when we go back to the old Christian church. And so if we could somehow get that wording in there right, I would agree with that. And then the only other thing, I keep focusing on the slide 14, where you talk about the unfunded projects and the concepts. And so this is, in no way are we looking to eliminate all of these. I know you even say "remove" there, but like you said, the Train Depot is still something that can be incorporated. So maybe the word "remove" is, is too strong a word, but a lot of these concepts are not going to be removed totally forever and ever, but somehow would be incorporated in some, in some other CIP projects. And, and that we will talk about in the fall of next year. Is that right?
All of those concepts that are unfunded, whatever we're proposing to change and regroup or combine or put a different spin on and retain history, those are all things we'll have lots more conversations. And you can weigh in, and you can give staff a little more understanding of Pew House, what your interests are, what does it mean for history, what, what kind of vision do you have there? We can have those kinds of conversations. Certainly helps us build project concepts that we can put in front of you that might be viable. Again, the Train Depot's been on the CIP for as long as I've been here. I will also say the historic homesite has been named four different things, but it's been essentially the same project. These things keep falling down, so we have to pay attention. Why are they falling down? Why are they not getting prioritized? Why aren't they naturally moving up as we complete projects? Why aren't they moving up? They just keep falling down to the bottom of the prioritization. It's funding, it's maybe we don't have a clear concept, maybe we're just trying to do only one thing, and we can maximize the potential of a site or the potential of a project concept. I heard that earlier today. We just have to rethink this. We have to put concepts in here that are winnable, that are doable, and we think that aligns to the community's and council's interest. And these, we just need to read the writing on the wall. They just keep falling down for a reason, and I think we need to talk about them. That's really what we're trying to say, even by the ones we've listed as "remove."
Yep. Thank you. And I, yeah, the other terminology, recombine, shift, those, that's absolutely, you've captured that, too. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Everyone who wanted a shot, has taken a shot there. Like, on this slide, you talk about the Train Depot. I think about Pullen Park, when they just have that one train car sitting there. So that could be as simple as that, to recognize our history, to incorporate that in a park or near the dog park on some space that's not being used. So I think that that's, that's just something that, it seems so big, but it could be really small if it's combined, like you're talking about. And the recreation center and multi-use space, in my mind, that's a later phase of the town center. So that's how I'm thinking about that, and that's going to come down in a few years, and that'll be some good community meeting space as well. And we do need some indoor basketball courts and some indoor volleyball courts. So I think that's going to meet the needs sometime down the road. If we could go to the active projects chart real quick, I just want to see if there's any thoughts from the rest of the council about the FY '23 column. I know we're not digging down too much, but if we're talking about having limited resources, I was just wondering if the council would be amenable to sort of looking at that $4 million for the Crabtree Creek Nature Park and maybe thinking about delaying that. We've already got $500,000 of design in there. How long before that design goes stale, for example? I know that park project has been challenged by some regulations about environmental and things like that, but I think we've identified some other items that have risen that may or may not eclipse the need for that park sooner rather than later. So if there's any council members who want to weigh in on that thought, now might be a time, as it would help give you direction about whether or not there's more capacity in the near term. So I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender.
I don't agree with delaying the Crabtree Creek Nature Park. I mean, it's already, the timeline is after the Morrisville Community Park phase, so, I mean, and like, as you said, I mean, the design's been done. If we delay it too much longer, we would have wasted $500,000.
Like, I said, it's a question for staff, if that money would be wasted. I mean, how long is that designed?
All right. Regardless, I'm giving my input is that I do not agree with pushing back the Crabtree Creek Nature Park.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati?
You know, if I'm 100% honest, and this may be on me, a lack of understanding of that project, but I, I don't think I've ever really seen the point of that project. And I, you know, it seems like, it's always seemed to me like a lot of money and a lot of building to create a nature park. And I, so I don't, I mean, I'm not certainly passionate about spending it in this budget cycle. I, I don't think I'm passionate about spending it at all, frankly. And, you know, I'm perfectly willing to be convinced, like I said. I mean, I may have a basic misunderstanding of the project. I'm happy to be corrected, not here, not now, but, you know, like, let's talk offline. But I, you know, I, and to be honest, the fact that we've already spent $500,000 on it, to me, is not a compelling argument for throwing $4 million at it. You know, like, if we've spent $500,000 on it, we, we don't get that money back if we don't go forward with that project. Like, that money is spent, it's gone. And, you know, so I just, I don't know, I would like to see us really taking a hard look at, you know, what the ROI is on that project, and, and do we need to do it? I mean, we're doing a lot of different things in the town, and there's, you know, there's going to be more green space than there was, and, you know, we have, I mean, we're looking at different green space options that can be provided, and I just, you know, I'm just wondering whether it's not time to maybe take a step back and look at that project and see if it's still something that the residents are clamoring for. Like, where is the, what's driving the necessity for that project?
Okay. Thank you for sharing. Oh, Mayor Pretam Johnson?
I, I want to echo Councilmember Fender. I, I think this is a project that we've talked about. It's a project that we've invested in. It's a project that we've shared with the public. The public has, through surveys, has indicated they want it. I mean, we even, during the bond process, talked about the fact that it was a shovel-ready project that would be a part of the bond. So I think we, we continue with the plans that we had and continue with this, this park as well. And don't forget, this park has, it's a, it's a fabulous greenway connection, connected to a greenway that offers more trails and greenways. It also has a playground for, a fully accessible playground for, for all, even those with disabilities. And that is an amenity that has, our community has asked for.
Okay. Great.
If I may add some comments, please?
Yes, please, of course.
Just a reminder, this project also has a $500,000 Partif grant attached to it, but as our bonds have now been issued and we've programmed in the fact-- but as our bonds have now been issued and we've programmed in the fact that we're going to issue bonds over several years, I think you're going to see some modifications anyways from Jeannie. You have not seen this project or gotten an update on it for a period of time. I don't think you have to rush to make a decision this evening about that report until you see how Jeannie's going to be moving some of those things around, and then I think that'll better inform your continued discussion.
Wonderful. Councilmember Rouse?
Yeah, my, I see, I see the logic behind it. I mean, if there's not as much of any now delaying it, my only concern is that, that we, you know, we've invested $500,000 and to see that, you know, if we've invested $500,000, can we not see the project through? But what I've heard from residents is they need, they really want more open space in the remaining amounts of Morrisville that we have to build out. You know, I think that the, the other concern I have is that we did, we did, we can use the bond money for whatever, it's pretty general parks, right? But I, I do feel like there was conveying to the public that we were going to use about, some of the bond proceeds for moving forward with this park. So that's just, you know, I, I gotta think about it. I mean, we don't have to make it, are you just asking us to socialize it tonight and consider it? Okay. I just need to think it through.
We're still, we're not early in the process, but Jeannie's going to bring back recommendations, and we'll have another possibility for public input later in the process as well.
Yes, sir.
So just any ideas like that, things that can help staff understand what we're thinking and why we're thinking it. That just helps you do a better job for us, so we appreciate that.
No, I appreciate hearing that. And yes, Martha, Town Manager Page is correct. Staff's going to bring forward some ideas. I, I put that, I put several things that it depends on, funding opportunities might require shifting of things. We, we know we have to account for a project that we moved ahead this year with the Cricket Park expansion. So let me rework and retool it. I think we can come to some arrangement of this existing CIP that is a winnable solution and aligns to as many of your common interests as possible. That's at least staff's goal, always.
Okay. Any final thoughts from council on this? Okay. Seeing none. Do you have what you need at this time?
I am good at this point. Hopefully, the conversation and information was good for you, and, and more to come.
Okay, so if you want to go back to the next step slide, is May 10 the next time we're really digging in on budget stuff?
Yes, sir. So on May 10, you will, you will get in advance with the, the agenda packet, your recommended budget for your operating and your redeveloped capital budget.
Okay, great. Anything else for the, go to the Order Town Manager Page?
Yeah, I, I hate to be the Debbie Downer, but I have to be a Debbie Downer a little bit. So we are
Recognize a motion to adjourn?
We are, we are working on your agenda package for April 25th, so a reminder, you're here Monday next week, again, not Tuesday. For those of you going to the league, your schedules did not align, so everybody's on their own to get there and back, and we'll compensate you for that, or I've heard some may be traveling with others. Eric and I will both be there to support council members that are there at that conference for the week. But your agenda package will reach you probably Thursday this week, and you've got lots of meaty reports in there, but one of them is a Harris Mill Road Fire Station 3 capital project update, because we do plan to bring you the construction award on May 10. Significant cost differential that we are facing for that project, so just want you to be aware of that, and your staff has plans and strategies to discuss with you. But you will have sticker shock as you read that presentation. So just wanted you to be prepared for that. Sorry.
I tried to build that into the slide. Martha just, just got you there.
Rip the Band-Aid off.
It shouldn't be a surprise, so.
All things, all things.
But I, and I, it does relate to the work Jeannie's doing about the CIP. There is just less capacity because the dollars are not going as far.
Okay. Councilmember Robati, you had a thought? I see your thing. Yeah, I thought that was a, I probably
Oh, sorry. No, but as long as, as long as all the attention's focused on me, I did want to say that I am really sorry that I'm going to be missing next week's workshop. I, I have to go to Florida, but I, I'm really jealous that you guys get to go. And I know you'll miss me, and you'll talk about me like dogs.
Okay, that sounds great. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second?
Okay, who, who was the second? Councilmember Fender with the second. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that we are adjourned. It is 8:27. Thank you all very much.